Dark are all over the place.
They're not good.
We've got a problem.
All right.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
The, um, wave chambers down at the end of the aquatic setting.
They call them the shark cages. I'm like, can we call them something else, please?
No, they do call them that.
Yeah, they do call them that. I was like, can we call those something else?
Been a long time since they've been down here.
Like puppy tanks.
Let's call them puppy tanks.
Underwater puppy story.
That's better.
Maybe goldfish.
Goldfish, call them gold.
Goldfish are a little less threatening.
But now that I know they're called shark. They're everywhere.
Get like a stuffed shark, wait on it. Now it just rocks.
I will freak.
You'll just see this thing?
I will freak out. I understand. That is not possible, but...
That scares me just to think about that.
No, I was the same way after Jaws came out. I used to be afraid. Cry. Because when I was like fifteen, I was like, oh, this is scary.
Good afternoon. I'm calling order of the regular work session for the service to city council for May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we'll mention that Ms. Ms. Gray called and said she be she will be watching from home. Um, item number two is the May tenth council agenda meeting items. And, uh, obviously we start with the role invocation pledge. Uh, under words and presentations, we have, uh, recognition of Detective Ransford. Um, city managers report. And item number two is the approval of the city council meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Do we have any discussion additions, deletions, corrections for the minutes of twenty-sixth April, two thousand and eighteen?
Would you ask Maria to stop doing such a good job on minutes? No.
No.
No, she's...
Be so veto.
She's doing a good, she's doing a good, she's doing a good job. She needs to keep doing a good job. Thanks, Maria.
No problem.
Okay, no discussion on item two. Item three is an intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County for building inspections. And that's going to be Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the IGA between the city and the county, uh, provides the ability for each agency to call upon, uh, the other for, uh, plan review and building inspection services on as needed as available basis. Uh, the agreement will be especially beneficial during staff absences or to cover inspections on large development projects. Uh, we don't anticipate the agreement being exercised on a frequent basis as we currently don't have the staff to perform more than an occasional service. Uh, inspections we would be reimbursed at, uh, the rate equal to the hour employees' hourly rate plus employee-related expenses with one hour minimum, uh, travel time. Uh, building plan review will be equal to the current, uh, plan review fee schedule. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a geographic limit to how far they'll send you guys out to?
Yes, uh, so the geographic area extends, uh, from, uh, Whitestone, just north of eighty-two, south to the international border and west of the San Pedro River. So how, uh, Hereford, Palominas, and Whitestone.
Okay.
Uh, would be the scope.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this more we help out the county as opposed to us taking?
Uh, more than likely, it'll be them sending us, uh, plan review, commercial plan review, uh, projects. Um, but there may be occasion where, you know, we have somebody out with an illness where we can, uh, utilize one of their inspectors, uh, during that timeframe.
And it's just the cost reimbursable, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Uh, we now go on to item number four, which is, uh, surplus, uh, fire engine. You're not seeing Chief York here. Chuck, you want to cover this one?
Sure, uh, thanks, uh, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. Uh, this is a request from, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Jim Henderson, who is a retiree from our, uh, department, uh, to, uh, receive a donation of our twenty-seven-year-old Pierce fire truck, uh, to the volunteer fire department in Camado, New Mexico. Uh, we've had this, uh, particular item, um, up for auction on the internet for, uh, a period of time now, and we have received one bid, but it was below the, uh, the, uh, minimum price we established of six thousand dollars. Um, generally, sometimes, you know, we, we have, um, donated vehicles, uh, ambulances, fire trucks to, uh, Cananea. In this case, we have not received a request for that, so, uh, we don't really have a use for the, uh, engine, so we are recommending approval tonight.
It's, uh, it's currently excess pending disposal?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Is, is there any kind of write-off for donating an item like this?
Unfortunately, Councilmember Calhoun, governments don't, don't get to do that.
Don't get write-offs. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've done everything we can to try to auction off and get money for it, and we're just at the point that we're just housing it to house it.
It's costing more to keep it than I think to get rid of it.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Pudzik. Uh, next couple items are appointments, uh, to the Cultural Diversity Commission and, uh, the Industrial Development Authority. Any comments or discussion on the appointments for those two items?
Thank you for the volunteers. We need it.
Okay. And that, that concludes the, uh, meeting for Thursday.
Should be quick.
So the next item is what we're all here for today. Item B is fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, general fund update and overview. And I'm guessing Mrs. Yar, Mrs. Yarborough is going to run the, run the show today since she's up there getting ready to bat.
I am. Thank you, Mayor. And luckily, Councilmember Ash is the only one who caught I almost dumped my entire water all over.
We all saw it. We were just nice.
Well, thank you all for that.
The reflexes were just amazing.
Must be all that working out.
Well, I suppose that that's as good a way to start the presentation as any. So, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Today is your first budget work session, so most exciting time of the year. I hope you're with me on that. Um, today we are going to go over a review of the general fund revenue, uh, personnel changes and personnel costs. We're going to briefly cover the requested budget O and M and overview summary and what our next steps are after today. So as many of you know, the general fund is our largest city fund. It composes approximately forty-five percent of the city budget. And out of that budget are many of our services, including public safety, our leisure and library services, administration, community development, and our non-enterprise fund, uh, public works divisions. Now, the revenue sources for the general fund are varied. Our largest, some of our largest sources on the general fund revenue would be our local sales tax, our state sales tax, vehicle license tax, our state shared revenue, and fees for service, which is what the city charges the community to use certain services of the cities. So a quick snapshot of our local revenue projections for this year, and again, all of our FY nineteen numbers currently are projections at this time. So we are projecting a trend upward in local sales tax revenue. That's based on this year in twenty eighteen, we saw a four percent increase over our projections. Those are our actuals trending for this year. We projected conservatively a, an additional two percent increase over that, but as David and I were discussing yesterday, we might reduce that just to stay within our traditionally conservative projections based on what our revenue comes back this month. So you may see that number trend downward a little more. Property tax, that assumes that the levy would remain at its current rate. Tiny increase there. Fees and permits, that increase you see there is a trend upward in building permits. Our community development division has seen an increase over the past year and expects that increase to continue. The decrease in charges for service is primarily a loss of ambulance revenue. We are not trending where we projected for the year, and we're working on figuring out what those reasons are currently. All other is just a line where we moved it back to put it this year's actuals. That is generally the sale of fixed assets. You may see that change if we decide to book additional revenue for something such as selling the liquor license from King's Court, if we decide to move forward with, um, booking the revenue, if we pursue selling King's Court. And Chuck, did you have a?
Yeah. Um, and on this sheet, actually, there's some, uh, interesting, uh, trends that, that are developing here that haven't been the case over the last few years. The, uh, local sales tax, uh, growth, uh, for, uh, the last year, uh, was much, uh, improved over, uh, what we've seen in previous years. So that is a very good sign and a good trend. And now we're starting to see, you know, some, some positive growth there. On the flip side, uh, we were dependent more on growth in our, uh, state shared revenues, state shared income tax, um, and, uh, the, uh, sales tax, and she'll go over that here in a minute, but those are, you'll see, are real, very flat now, and we're not seeing the growth there. So it's flipped. We're now seeing our own local sales tax start, you know, growing, but we're not seeing the growth, uh, because of the, uh, lack of population growth here, uh, relative to the population growth in Maricopa County. So, so it's an interesting thing to keep our eye on, but it's good to see that the local, uh, sales tax is improving.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's, you know, it's population-based that want to talk about the sales, state sales. There's state shared revenue, whether it's income or sales.
Yep.
I had a question about the charges for service. Specifically, um, you said it was the projections for ambulance service. Is, does that have anything to do with the Fort Huachuca agreement or?
Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Mayor Protem Ash, uh, no, that does not include the Fort Huachuca revenue.
Okay. I, I was just, um, trying to wrap my mind around what could be some of the causes of, um, a decrease or not trending where you think it would be.
We are looking into it, and hopefully we'll be able to share that another time. Okay.
And Mayor Mueller, uh, Council, or Mayor Protem Ash, it could be that maybe our projection last year could have been too aggressive as well, so that could be one of the reasons as well. But again, we'll, we'll take a look at it and try to make sure, you know, there are specific reasons for it.
Could it be, um, we're healthier?
One can always hope.
Well, I wanted to pass that on to the, uh, Service to Be Healthy Committee, that we're, it's working, but maybe it's too soon.
It's a little too soon.
Where does the money from the ambulances go then if it doesn't go into this area?
Mayor, Councilmember Wolf, the ambulance revenue all goes into the general fund. Um, part of the reason for last year's projection increase was the addition of the second transport crew, where they expected to get additional transport runs on some of the other off-hours. We weren't running service that other agencies were getting them, so that's one of the aspects we're looking at. But all of the charges for service that you see here, all going to the general fund to support the overall operations.
Was that, was that your question?
I'm not sure, but we're going to move on.
Okay.
But I, I think my question was more what part of the general fund does it go?
It would go on the charges for service line.
Yes, it's in the charges for service, and it makes up about one point seven million, one point eight million dollars of that total amount is the charges for service just for the ambulance.
Okay, and I guess that was just my question from Mayor Protem Ash.
Oh, I did have an additional question.
Go for it.
Um, I was curious about, um, don't jump to any conclusions, I'm just asking the question, how much are we permitted to increase property taxes?
Well, uh, there's a cap, uh, that's been established by the legislature. I want to say it's, uh, and it relates to, it's two percent, I believe.
Um, the, we have a cap, um, and that cap increases two percent every year, and we are well below the cap. Mike can get you the exact number. I don't have the sheet with me. I think Linda went to try and get it, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars that we've stayed below the cap.
Below, yeah.
It's two percent every year?
So if the maximum, they have a maximum property tax that they reset back in two thousand and six.
Mm-hmm.
And at that time, it was reset to about four hundred thousand dollars, give, take. So it goes up from four, the maximum we can go, goes up from four hundred to two percent more than that, to two percent more than that, to two percent more than that.
Each year.
Each year. Now, we have chosen to keep our levy amount the same every year.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no, uh, limit on what you could raise the limit, the levy to up to that maximum. So we could take it from, my thing, it's, let's say it's seventeen cents, because that sticks in my mind from a couple years ago. We could raise it from eleven cents per hundred to seventeen cents per hundred. But if we're at the maximum amount, then it can only grow at two percent every year, because the maximum grows at two percent. Clear as mud?
No, well, you know, actually, that is clear. The only piece I'm not clear about is what our number is right now. And is that three, uh, fifty-nine?
Yeah, our current revenue would be three fifty-nine, and we get that number, you know, through our assessed valuation in the, in the county, and that's a pretty hard number. Uh, the, uh, projection that Dave is talking about, if you could take it, or if you did take it to the limit that the state is allowing us to, it would probably be on the order of about two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional general fund revenue.
And that would be at, to the seventeen cents per, uh, one hundred assessed value?
And it's probably a little bit more than that now, but...
And that would sit us at the four hundred thousand?
Maximum. Maximum, which I think is about five hundred and some thousand dollars.
And then you're still allowed to go over that by two percent?
Next year, the next year, the next year, that maximum will grow two percent, and the next year, the maximum will grow two percent. So every year after that, you may get ten thousand, fifteen thousand off of it after that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Moving on to some more specifics about our charges for service. Uh, we're looking at a small downward trend in general government charges for service. That's based on this year's actuals. It tends to fluctuate up and down. Uh, there's some printing and duplicating that not as much is happening as used to, things like printing out, uh, bid packets and so on. Uh, public safety, that number you see again is the downward trend in ambulance revenue. The small increase in community development is, again, small increases in everything other than building permits as well. So community development continues to see some increases across the board. Public Works is projecting, uh, flat revenue, and Leisure and Library is projecting a small increase primarily due to Ms. Wilson's examination of the sports field, uh, fees and projecting some additional tournaments. Four, unfortunately, we continue to see a decline in, in revenue from the state of Arizona. Uh, except, sales tax is trending up, uh, based on this year's actuals that have come in. We've projected a conservative increase in our state shared tax revenue. Income tax continues to trend down, and keep in mind that these are a year behind, um, this year, so as population decreases and it increases in other areas, we continue to see less. Vehicle licensing tax is also trending upward. Uh, we saw an increase this year over what was inspe, expected, and so we are projecting a small increase for next year as well. Grants is primarily public safety grants. Those can also tend to trend up and down. And then local government payments, you see a significant decrease there simply because last year we did not have the intergovernmental services agreement with the fort finished at that time, so we estimate it high. And so the fiscal year nineteen projection there has the actual cost of what the Fort Huachuca contract is.
Question. All right, so the fort contract, uh, last year projected two point four million dollars, and that was assuming that we got it done on time and we were able to, to roll through it. This year, it's already in place, but we're only projecting a million dollars in revenue. What's, what's causing the, uh, the one point four million dollar delta in terms of that?
Mr. Mount, I believe it was that we simply estimated high because the, the negotiations were not finished last year. So when the negotiations were finished through last summer and fall, and the contract was finalized, the actual number can go in this year now.
So this is a firm fixed-price contract?
Correct.
Are our costs still below the, the revenue that we're bringing in?
Yes, and it's also a, it's not a contract that follows our fiscal year. It's January to December, so there will be a small increase the following year as well.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so essentially, this is just a, I hate to put it this way, last year was our first year, so the budget number there is a straight projection. This is a more realistic projection based on the actuals. And then because it's firm fixed price, we're not exceeding that cap, and because it's outside of our fiscal year with the government's, however they're doing it, then we'll get some trailing revenue at the beginning of the next year.
That is correct.
Clear as mud?
Moving on to personnel changes for next year. At this point in time, we have no position, no position changes included and no new position. Our PSPRS contribution increased substantially, as you've heard, uh, a few times already. The good news, if you could call it that, is that it didn't increase quite as much as we expected it to, and that was due to some retirements and some new hires, um, in the PD. So only an increase of four hundred twelve thousand. And we have a significant increase in fire department overtime, which we're meeting with the fire department later to, again, see if we can't narrow down those costs and bring that number down.
Would, would part of the people that we're using for the fort contract, would they be able to be candidates for recruitment to the fire department, or would they be able to cross-level some of those employees over to do some of the work?
Uh, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Mount, uh, yes, that is a pool of, of applicants that we can draw from for hiring. Uh, crossing them over back and forth is a little bit more problematic, um, but, um, the, uh, it does provide a source. Our, our real issue is, is hiring enough paramedics to meet both our needs and the fort, forts needs right now. We're, we're kind of running, you know, very tight, uh, in that area in terms of recruitment. EMTs are relatively easier for us to hire, so, so that pool is pretty narrow right now, but we have been able to keep up.
So in the, uh, position changes and new positions, um, I, I don't quite understand no position changes. Does that mean, I, I don't know what that means.
Well, uh, as Victoria go, goes through the, uh, presentation, you'll see why we're not currently recommending, uh, any additional new positions or, uh, any re, uh, what that means is reclassifications or changes, you know, in positions, so...
Okay.
But, uh, right now, we're, we're not in a position to be able to do that.
Okay. Just, we'll listen on, and then if there's any other questions around that.
So our preliminary estimates as far as revenues, net salaries, and debt service goes, you can see before you, last year at this time, our revenues were approximately thirty-five million dollars. This year, as we just went through, we're projecting our total revenues to be down, um, of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars over last year, while our net salary expenses have increased by about one point one million due to that PSPRS increase, the fire overtime costs, and then we've included the two percent step employee raise for this year, which would total three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. The debt service would cover financing for ambulances. Those are two for the city and two for Fort Huachuca. Uh, the ones for Fort Huachuca are covered by the Fort Huachuca IGSA contract. This excludes transfers in and note proceeds, which refers to the capital improvement fund and financing capital items.
Question about overtime and the fire department. Is that something that if you, if we had enough fire personnel, if we, if we were able to have enough fire personnel, we would exclude that overtime?
We're not quite an answer there yet, Councilmember Calhoun. That's why we're still looking at the causes for the overtime and why we're sitting down and, and looking at that in depth later this week.
Yeah. Uh, and Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Calhoun, off the top of my head, and, and we are looking very closely at this to determine the reasons and, and how to best address this issue, because it does need to be addressed. But I couldn't sit here and tell you more personnel would be the answer to the question right now. I think it's other things.
And a brief snapshot, we haven't yet started to delve into O and M requests with each department. We plan to begin that next week. Um, but you can see where we're at this year as compared to last year. Last year, we had remaining, um, to cover O and M costs about nine million dollars. This year, we're looking at just over seven million. So with a slight increase in net O and M requests, and that is primarily not due to departments who just want more things, that's not the, the situation. Uh, we have some other circumstances going on, like, um, Arizona water created a new tier. We found out unexpectedly, and so our water costs increased by fifty percent. So those are some not-so-fun pri, surprises to just see appear on your water bills. Um, and so at this point, we are out approximately four hundred sixty-one dollars, and that is without capital. Um, we've had some significant capital requests for this year as well, and just to share what a couple of those items are looking like. Uh, we've got fires requesting new radios. Their, their radios are over twenty years old, and it's becoming more difficult to replace and repair those. Uh, they've also requested cardiac monitors. Um, our IT department has requested a new server structure as support will be ended, uh, this year. Um, so we have some substantial capital requests, and we're going to be sharpening the pencils pretty hard to figure out how to accomplish that. Yes, Mr. Mount?
Can you give us a bit of a preview of what's the total cost right now looking like in terms of what we're going to have to come up with to meet the top four or five capital expenses, the ones that are critical?
I would love to, but we're not quite there yet. So right now, uh, we just have what I shared with you today. Um, in a couple weeks, uh, hopefully we'll be able to share that information with you.
Understood.
And Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Mount, uh, you, you, you kind of see the scope of the, uh, problem that we're, we're facing in the presentation so far. We're, uh, almost four hundred sixty-two thousand dollars out of balance, and that's just with the personnel and O and M budgets, uh, right now. So, uh, so when you add any capital on top of that, of course, that means, uh, that number is going to grow. Uh, and, you know, I'd say a reasonable number off the top of my head for capital would probably be, you know, on the order of maybe seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars in terms of some of the needs that need to be met. So, uh, so we're facing some substantial cuts in other areas to try to, uh, to accommodate that, and right now, you know, the good, the good news is that, you know, what's rolled into that number so far includes all the PSPRS contributions and includes, um, you know, the, uh, step increase for the employees, you know, and that kind of thing. Uh, but, uh, all those things together are, uh, without the revenue growth that we would like to see even with the sales tax growth. It's not, the revenue growth is not enough to keep up with those expenses.
Mayor, I've got a couple more questions. So the, um, and not to put you on the spot, Chief, but I've mentioned it for the last several months, the, um, the CRT, is that funded with this current outlay of personnel?
Right now, uh, I have two individuals in that unit. We're putting another one in now based on hire, so, uh, we have the slots. It's about getting the, the number of people based on the long-term unavailability that, that we talked about, so, um, it's still a matter of trying to make sure the patrol is still fully, um, staffed before we get too many people into the specialty units.
But is the, is the money there to have the CRT fully staffed? It's just a matter of staffing?
That would be only if we had every position filled and assigned.
What's the cost to do that?
Well, that's in the budget already. That's currently budgeted at sixty-six positions, but, uh, based on, you know, we get two weeks' notice when somebody leaves, takes a year to replace them. We never actually have fully staffed and assigned, uh, the sixty-six positions.
Okay. And I guess the next question is, is the discussion that we had several work sessions ago reference the, more of the hierarchical departments, the firefighters, the police officers with the way that their pay raises are administered, where there's kind of an out-of-sequence with some of them as opposed to others? If we change that policy, is there going to be a cost to execute that policy?
Uh, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Mount, um, I, I know the situation that you're referring to, and it has, a lot has to do with the date that was established in the class comp plan. class comp plan that the council adopted a number of years ago. Uh, you know, there's a, there's different ways, as I've talked to you before, about alleviating that. Um, but, uh, if you change the date, you're not, you're, you're just shuffling the cost from one place to another.
Yep.
You're not really going to see budget savings.
I'm not looking for budget savings in this. I, what I want to see is if, if we just shift the dates around, what would be the difference in terms of whether it's an upward crawl or if it's offset? What I want to do is fix that problem at a policy level, because I don't think that's anything that's, it's, it's council's fault for probably kind of bringing that on. But there is a, there's a, uh.
I wouldn't say that.
Well, there's a, there's a way to fix it, I believe, but I want to make sure that we're also doing it correctly and making sure the money's there to fix it, if that's what it requires. Because right now, it's creating inequity, which is creating other issues. Well, it is. I mean, it's, it'd be like, it'd be like me, it'd be like me in the military, in the way the military hires it, and, you know, Rick, you know, Mr. Mayor's been there, and I know your husband and your husband. But if I were to get promoted to staff sergeant, and you get promoted to staff sergeant six months later, but you get your pay raise, and I'm still waiting for mine, it does create inequity that, that is noticeable. Um, it doesn't happen that way in that organization. I don't think it has to happen that way in our organization. I just wanted to make sure if we, if council says, let's fix the problem, that the money's there to actually fix the problem.
Yeah, I, again, I don't think it's gonna matter much budgetarily, you know, how we address, uh, the issue going forward.
Oh, that's, that's good, though. So if council decides to.
I think it's more an administrative issue, and I think, yeah, we would owe you a better explanation as to how it works and why, uh, certain things will and won't work very well. I think you're only hearing one side of the story right now.
Then I would, I would appreciate having a fuller discussion about it.
Need to discuss, we need to schedule that policy discussion, Chuck.
With, with the entire council?
Well, that's, yeah.
Okay.
We, we, this group need to hear it.
Right. What a, uh, so you're talking, so we're talking another million plus if all the capital projects are, are put through?
Well, uh, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Mount, what we, uh, need to do yet is take a look at what the, uh, capital requests are. We have those lists, uh, put together, and basically, it's a matter of prioritizing the ones that, uh, we do think need to go forward, and then adding that number, uh, to this, uh, particular deficit that we face in the O and M, uh, categories here. And then we need to start whittling down and making cuts, uh, in other areas to try and accommodate that.
Thank you.
And so our next steps after today, as I mentioned before, we will be meeting with departments again to work on balancing requests, balance the remaining funds, completing the tentative budget book, which we still plan to get to you the Friday before Memorial Day in a couple of weeks. And so again, your upcoming budget meetings, the tentative budget book is coming. Um, you should probably expect to talk about the budget our next work session in May, and our public budget work sessions are scheduled for June 11th through the 13th. The tentative budget vote scheduled for June 28th, the final budget vote, and property tax hearing on July 26th, and the property tax vote on August 9th. And just to circle back quickly to the property tax, uh, Linda and David were able to pull up the information, so the current property tax levy is at 359,833 dollars. The maximum amount it could go up to is 573,672 dollars. Any additional questions?
Anybody?
I'll just make, I'll just make a comment. We appreciate you getting this, this initial data out to us, uh, as quickly as you can. Uh, it gives, it gives us an indication that there's gonna be, have to be some tough decisions be made, and I'll just say from my position, uh, everything should be on the table, and, uh, we should be, we should be prepared to make, as council members, be prepared to make some hard decisions, because the money's just not gonna appear by itself. So there's gonna be challenges.
That's a good point about it just doesn't appear. So, uh, it would be interesting to hear what are all the possibilities for raising fi, raising revenue? What other alternatives do we have besides?
We are, we are gonna get a brief on revenue later on in, in the process.
Well, um.
Because all you do is basically cover the.
We, we cover the changes and what we have. Uh, and, you know, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Calhoun, uh, you know, it, it is a difficult situation because the state of Arizona limits our options so dramatically. Uh, we, we already talked, uh, you know, you know, fairly extensively about the limitations on, you know, your ability to raise revenues for property tax. So, uh, you know, in reality, to raise the type of funds that we're, we're looking at, you really only have sales tax. I mean, honestly, that's, that's really the only way to get there. In terms of those ki, types of numbers that we're talking about.
So future discussion?
Yeah.
For sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for, for Victoria? Thank you, Victoria. We appreciate you, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Give us a lot to think about. Okay. Uh, next is report on recent trips, meetings, and future meetings. Uh, on Friday, I'll be going to the League of Cities and Towns Executive Board, uh, where they're gonna basically go through a recap of the, the legislative session and, uh, and, uh, what we need to do for future legislative, uh, efforts at the League. Anybody else have any future meetings, trips? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will not be here on the week of the 22nd for that one council session. I'll be down at a Department of Energy conference and, uh, visiting a couple of the military installations that week.
Glenn, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to comment on, did I already come in on attending the town hall in Emecio?
I don't, frankly, I don't remember.
Join the crowd.
You mentioned that you were.
Did I?
You were going.
That I was going. I have to say that it was a, an excellent, um, town hall with lots of input from, uh, folks from around the state and also from Emecio and different communities in, uh, northern part of Sonora. Uh, there was a lot of emphasis on the, um, mega-region and, um, the relationship between, um, Sonora and, uh, Arizona. And I, we, as our, um, economic development department has made really clear, we're building strong relationships with, um, northern Mexico, and I, I'm glad to see we're hosting Sonora Fest and doing other things that, um, build on that relationship. I, I also just want to add that I think it's helpful for, uh, government to be involved in those, um, those type of, uh, programs, as many of us have been, in those type of building relationships with northern Mexico. Uh, we also attended, several of us, you, Mayor, Alicia, I'm not sure who else was there this morning, to the, um, Good Morning Sierra Vista, which was a really good, uh, program this week. And we heard some interesting comments from the, uh, I want to.
Pitt Gilligan?
Yeah.
The county administrator.
County administrator on, uh, how the county is moving forward with economic development and working with all the cities to, um, to the best advantage of the, the whole area on, uh, building economic development, and to a lesser degree, tourism too, don't you think? Tourism was part of that, so. We just keep doing what we're doing.
Anybody else on, on meetings, future meetings? Board Commission Lee is on updates? Anything?
I haven't had one yet since last time.
Okay. Uh, then we'll go into the future discussion items. I got a couple, a couple of things. Uh, we will be shortly, uh, having some discussions about the sister cities. Uh, Laura's been worked very, been working very diligently on a, I, I'm assuming it's gonna be called a partnership agreement of some type for the new nonprofit, uh, sister cities group, that the city will partner with those folks, and hopefully, that, that all the, uh, responsibilities will be defined, so we'll have a discussion here. We also, uh, once that's done, if, if we approve the partnership, then, then there'll have to be some type of administrative action to, uh, terminate the sister cities commission. So we'll just have a private organization, sister cities organization that we partner with, and that, that should be coming up here, uh, soon. Uh, the other thing I'll mention is I got a nice little email from Gwen, uh, this past week. If you don't know, the, uh, what was known as the, the Mountain View Officers Club, also the Historic Colored Officers Club on posts, uh, there's, there's an ongoing process to turn that into a, a community event center for Fort Huachuca and Sierra Vista. Uh, in the past, there's been a, been the National Historic Trust came up with half a million dollars for that. Recently, it was the Arizona.
Community.
Community Foundation came up with, was it 57, 54, 54,000 dollars? They handled the historic parts to be in there. Uh, the discussion with Gwen on the, on her email was, uh, basically, are we still, are we still, uh, interested in, in promoting this? And, uh, this, the council is on record as being in support of this effort, and I think we should continue to do that. Uh, when we have people from, uh, outside the community that come up and ask the question, well, what's the city doing? The, the question needs to be, well, what, what do you think we should be doing? Because we can do things like, since, since the council has approved this, have the mayor write letters as far as applications for addition, you know, the applications for additional grants and monies and that type of thing. But as you just, as you just saw, we don't have a lot of extra cash at this time to pursue those, pursue those things. So we are in support as a community. That's the answer. And the way we can help is depends, as long as it doesn't involve cash, we can, we can write letters, we can call folks. I mean, we can do what we need to do, uh, to try to promote, uh, the, the effort, and obviously, it's gonna be a good thing for the community. So those are my two items. Anybody else have discussion items? Council requests? Yes, sir?
With the preceding subject you were just talking about, Mayor, what, what number do we need to hit? What's the magic number?
You mean for the development of?
Yeah.
I, I don't have that.
They don't, that's part of, that's part of the issue. They don't have, they don't have a final number, because it's, it's a phased thing where they wanna do the initial building, and then they were gonna, they're gonna want to add an outdoor, outdoor space, and even potentially additional, uh, ball fields, et cetera. We're, we're, we're talking several, probably several million. And it's been a while since I saw the, I saw the, so I don't have the number on the tip of my tongue.
Uh, one of the things I'd like to do is have, um, someone from that group come in and do an update for us, uh, to let us know where they are and get that kind of information.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. I think Angie would come in from Community Foundation, but others, there may be somebody else who would come in too. So would that be helpful to the council?
Yeah, any, with the scope, schedule, cost, if we can get that, we could probably be a little easier to go out and get something.
There's some, some really, um, you know, the level of excitement and energy around that, that present, that conversation was, was outstanding, and I think that's what made me feel so passionate about it too, was that all these others are very excited. And I even heard a conversation around, wow, with the work you're doing on the West End, and with this building going in here, and.
The multiplier effect.
Yeah, and, and so it, you know, we, I was able to envision that whole project and how, I even heard mentioned, you probably have two, uh, walking paths and bike paths between the two facilities. So it's, it's really going to be a positive for the community and, and, uh, something we can all look forward to, for the post too.
Yep.
For future conversation, I'd like to, I have a few ideas for various commissions that I'd like to bring forward to the council, if that's okay. I'll, uh, kind of write up some basic stuff and, um, get it to you guys, and then we can have a conversation about whether it's feasible or not, that fits them. And I think that was it. There was one other thing, but I didn't write it down, so you know where that is. So, um, I'll bring it up later.
Anybody else on this item? All right, I will thank everybody for being here, especially the folks that worked hard on, on the budget presentation. I know we got, we got a way to go on that yet, so, uh, uh, thank you, thank you for your perseverance. Uh, seeing nothing else before the council, meetings adjourn.